Hola, I'm gonna see if they're gonna let me make a video. Sorry for y'all that were trying to see the video out there with the tree. There is a tree, a camphora, wait, cam- cam- camphora. I spelled it out, camofa, camofa tree. And um, it looks like a lady with her legs spread open. I'll put pictures up so that you guys could check out pictures. But um, lately some of my videos been, you know, tripping, I get cut off. You know, they see me talking on my Mel T four four. Hola. Yes, they be trying to, they be trying to stop the message, but they can't do it, Melchizedek, they can't do it. Yes, I check. Hola Alice. So, given us many messages, thank you, thank you, thank you. Hola Jillian, Jillian, your package is on its way. Um, lots of sexual energy happening right now, so. Getting a lot of questions in my inbox, I am not available to answer everybody's questions, so. Making this video today a Q and A, so that if you guys have any questions. Melchizedek, you heard me calling you eh? So I wanna um, share some stuff, so the tree that I was out, I've, I've. It's a tree that's right in front of the house, so I like to go and sit by that tree and I learned that it is a Japanese tree. It's originally from, from China and I guess they make, you know that product Campo Phoenique? Is that kind of um, is, i- is a tree for that. So I'm looking at the tree and the tree looks like her legs are wide open and you look inside the tree, I'mma post pictures. And you see the glistening sap that looks like the tree is wet. So this is an indication of the time that we're in, symbols are everywhere, all the time. And this is showing that it's, you know, springtime is here, now you're gonna start to see a lot of things blossoming. But in watching the forecast and looking at what's going on with the planet in the weather, things are not happening like they normally happen. You know, it's like things are really shifting and there are energies that are manipulating the weather. Hola, hola, hola Aziri. Um, Michael says final call, ache, hola Harmony. Um, but this is the time, this is that time to start um, really getting prepared because the next twenty years. You're gonna be seeing things that you've never seen before ever in your life, including um, you know, uh. Other planetary interaction that's more open with the species, cuz right now they still want. For people to believe that there's not any alien activity happening out here and there actually is all the time. And there are areas that are protected from it so that people don't know, we've heard of them before, Area fifty one, different things like that. And those places do exist and they hold information that they can't hold anymore. Because it is a time now for it's apocalypse. You know, this is happening now, you know, so many, so many movies and so many people and so many things talking about, you know, the end of times. Remember the two thousand twelve, the end of times, that's when all of this whole thing started, that's when it started getting super real. You know, and that's when people started getting their codes and being able to connect to the symbolism of what was going on. In their lives so that they can move forward and now it's all coming together, I've talked about it in um. A broadcast that I did called Global Reset on the Ringing Stone Network, that's on my page if you wanna check that out. But this is a time where the last shall be first, but everybody has to earn it and um, healing needs to take place. And this sexual energy is the first place you begin, so I've been hitting it strong on sexual energy. And I'm gonna keep pounding on it, no pun intended, um, because it's necessary, it's necessary for you to know what to do. With this sexual energy, it's important because it's the most important thing that exists in you. And a lot of people are waiting for validation from another being in order for their, for them to feel sexually free and sexually, you know, complete. And you do not need that, you could do that on your own, you must be able to do that on your own. So that you can experience better, higher frequency results in your action when, you know, when you have sex, when you engage. In the physical act of sex, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to y'all and see if anybody has any questions or comments. Um, I will say this, organ energy batteries, organ energy devices, y'all seen it, if y'all know me, y'all know what it is. Um, this is sexual energy encapsulated in these little devices. Sexual energy exists in all of us all the time, so whatever you make, when you make a song, your sexual creative energy is in there. When you make a painting, your sexual creative energy is in there, so anything that has sexual. Creative energy that, that is made from the soul, from the heart and soul, has sexual creative energy in it, that's why the arts is so important. But when you take a device like this and you put your sexual creative energy inside of a device like this, what happens is. The crystals, metals and the resin that are in here creates what is called a scaler wave. A scaler wave is a multi-dimensional energy that moves faster than the speed of light. This is energy that's healing from the cell, from deep within and it creates other cells and it creates high vibration. It is life force. Prana, chi. So when you have this energy, this is the only energy that is available on the planet right now. That can combat all of the toxins that are coming in our systems through our telephones, through um, the uh, chemtrails. Through all of these different things that are happening and you see this right here? This is a Mel T four, 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 this is a communication device, depending on where you are. That's how far you can communicate with it, but if you're not at that level of communicating with it, it is also a protection device. This has shungite in the, in the um, in the base of it. And you put it anywhere in your body and you can regulate and balance, you could um. You could do a lot of work with a device like this and you can protect yourself from these energies that are existing. That are like from the cellphone, all of these different things, these are powerful tools that our ancestors brought forth to us so that we can use. And because our ancestors are coming forward all the time, they are here now. They are creating devices such as these, such as the organ energy, all of these devices for your healing specifically. For your sexual healing, your sexual energy, your divine feminine energy that exists in both male and female. So it's very important that you get a hold of it. Hola Mobina from the UK and hola Adi and hola Victoria and hola Catherine. So if you guys have any questions, I'm going to scroll down to see, uh, Michael says ET phone home, yes, extraterrestrials phone home. We have to disconnect from the whole idea of thinking that our salvation is outside of us. That our salvation is in a device or is in another person, our salvation is within ourselves. So we have to connect with that divine within us so that we could get the answers. There's so many illusions and so many different perceptions that exist that for you to just go based on one person's perception. You're doing yourself a disservice because it is their perception, I don't care how much you think they look like Jesus or how. Beautiful the goddess is, it is still not you and so if the information is not coming from you and validated by your higher self, you yourself and Most High. Then it's not valid, it doesn't work and see, we're in a time too. Where a lot of people feel like they gotta preach and they gotta save the world and because God gave them the mission to, you know, heal the people and blah, 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 skippy. But you have to do it within yourself, you can't help anybody if you're not helping yourself because what is in here is gonna emanate. And so that's really what it is and the way that people's mentalities are now, the mindset. You could have Jesus and Buddha and Isis and God himself and herself. And um, all of creation sitting at the table with some people exchanging, laughing, having dinner. I don't know, even maybe smoking weed and everything. They will not hear what is being said because if you're not ready to get the message, you're not gonna get it and everything I'm speaking is gibberish. So you have to be in the proper frequency in order to receive the symbolism and the decode and the. Coding and all the information that's being brought forth to you by way of your dreams, by way of your experience, by way of your interaction with other people. So all of these things are for you to have, so I'mma see if you guys have any questions. Hola Edinana Carter, Edinana Carter looks. Oh yes, it's a female tree, the camphora tree is a female tree, solution came and just told me that when you guys see the pictures, you guys are gonna trip out. She looks, her legs is um, spread open, but she has four arms. Y'all will see it, anyway, um. Hola Denise, hola Jackie. Okay, let me see if you guys have alien, Dawn says aliens. Anything that has existed in movies, in the media, really exists, they get that from somewhere, they mix it up and do whatever they wanna do with it. So that you don't believe in it so that they can manipulate your thinking, but they do disclose a lot of the things that they do because it's part of universal law that you have to let. You know, the people know what is being done, what, what, what you're doing to them and so we just agree by being like, you know, dumbed down. Hold on just one second, yes, Mikayla, I just wanted to say hi. Okay, hola. Alright, okay, I'm getting down to the question, Michael says, they don't want to hear that, no, they don't wanna hear it, they don't wanna hear it. Um, hola Catherine Renee, healing, balance, frequency and vibration, Ajadichi, need those crystals, absolutely. Crystals and if you look at like, if you're somebody that studies like business and the stock market and gold and all of these different things. Look where the money is going, look at, you know, we've been um, purchasing crystals for the last six years. When we started and now it's like, it, it, crystals are not cheap, you know what I mean? And it's like, and people are knowing the power of it and so they're trying to collect them all, but this is something just like gold that it's like. Wherever it is, nature creates it and that's what it is, it's people's mentality and their greed that feel that there is a um. That there is lack, there is no lack, that is only in the mind, there's a full abundance all the time. Uh, Juju, hola Juju wants to know, do you have any suggestions for someone who may have a high sex energy and trying to control it? Sexual detox, been talking about it for the last few days, sexual detox, you have to stop. You have to stop telling yourself that you don't have control because you do, like nobody, anything outside of you having control is manipulation. So if you don't have control, then you're being manipulated from the outside, it's important for you to disconnect from everything on the outside that is not serving your highest good. And seclude yourself, if there's a female, I don't care how nice she is, how cute she is, how smart she is, how, you know, sexy she is. It is not in your benefit to engage with anybody in a space where you feel like you don't have control of yourself. So until anybody has control of themselves, you don't got no business having sex no way. Because it's going to control you in some way, shape or form, be it you get rid of your money, be it you lose everything, be it you get taken advantage of. It all comes in, that's where it's coming in from, that's where we're being attacked the most. So there's no other way about it except for you must detox from any sexual activity until you start learning yourself. And you start learning why it is that your body is, is, is acting in that way, you're a creative being. So when you feel like having sex, what you need to do is be spitting some rhymes, you need to be writing that shit. When you feel like doing that, you need to be dancing, moving around them chakras, shaking up that energy and uplifting it and directing it to an intention. That you wanna procreate, that's what you wanna do, there, there is no soft way of saying, well. Wean yourself off and um, you know, just say, you know, hold hands but don't kiss but don't know. They, we're not even at that point anymore, sex energy is so powerful, especially at this time, we're in springtime. Bunny rabbits, animals, insects, birds and everything is having babies right now, flowers are blooming. This energy in us is so strong and those of us that are not able to maintain the control of it fall into negative relationships. Or situations that cause us to sacrifice our sexual nature, our sacred spaces for. How much, thirty seconds of pleasure? An orgasm that lasts, you know, however long it lasts, as opposed to an orgasmic vibration. That you can have as long as you align yourself with it and connect yourself to it. There's a lot of people that have taken back their power, they're not having sex and this has nothing to do with religion and it's like, oh goodness, I wanna be right with the Lord. You're always right with the Lord, you are perfect in your imperfection, know that. But as you go through the process of healing, your sexual detox is for yourself, it is only for yourself, it's not for nobody else. Don't nobody, you don't need to make videos about, hey, one week and I haven't had no sex, ten days that I've had no, you know, it's like, it's not for that. It is for you and only for you, it is a study and a practice that you have to do with yourself. And you will know when you've graduated because you're on the next level, you feel it, you know it, you walk different, you speak different, everything, your whole perception, everything becomes different. So, but it's all, it's, it's something that you gotta do for yourself, there's a lot of um. And let me, and, and Juju, you know I love you, let me just say, your meditation is everything. Meditation is when you detach from everything that's on the outside, your breath, that is everything. So when you feel that energy starting to come, take a pause, stop, breathe it in through your mouth, out, in through your nose, out through your mouth. You know what I mean, give yourself time to process what's happening in your body, don't be so fast to act, you know? So, uh, and start trusting that and once you do that, you're gonna find that you know the solution to everything all the time, I'm telling you, that's how it works. Okay, Mobina says, sometimes when wearing my organ, I can feel the energy from it quite intensely. More so now than when I first started wearing it, which was about a year ago, is there any particular reason for that? My sister, Mobina, there is absolutely a reason for it, the first thing. And I'm getting chills as I'm speaking this, the first thing is that every piece is uniquely done, every piece is one of a kind. And every piece was designed to go to someone, whoever it goes to, however it got to you, whatever piece you have. These are like the ancestors incarnated through these little devices. And so when you start to clear your space, once you get it, it automatically starts working, it doesn't matter what you believe in. It doesn't matter what you pray to, nothing like that, it is science, so once these scaler waves come together and start going in your body. It starts healing yourselves from within and it starts clearing space, creating space or open portals in your body to receive more information. And so it starts aligning to the energy of you and it starts making you more sensitive to energy, so. What is really happening is the basics of it clearing energy and what you're experiencing by taking action and continuing with your study. And continuing with your spiritual work, you know, you are creating more portals for understanding and comprehending. Your own path and your own journey, so you just become more sensitive, I have clients that tell me that. They feel negative energy coming since they started wearing their piece because you feel, you, you feel it and we all are aware of it because we're all. Um, beings of energy, but a lot of us are desensitized and when you're desensitized, you don't see something coming until it's way too late. I know y'all have seen them Asian movies, the Kung Fu, when like, you know, the, the master is hearing and all of a sudden he be like. You know, he, cuz he heard it, like he felt it, he felt the energy of what was coming before it even came. And you know, we would watch those movies, we'd be like, oh wow, those are like superpowers. Superpowers that you can have, that anyone can have when you start to practice your self mastery, when you start to connect. With who you are and listen to the sounds and, and watch the symbols, you're gonna get, you're gonna be able to get all this information. And that's what happened with organ energy devices and these are organ energy batteries, so this is our family name for what we do. But Organite, organ energy devices, they all in essence do the same thing, as long as they have the formula of crystals, metals and resin. And you do have to do it in layers, a lot of people just do like one layer and that's it, that changes. The rhythm, that changes the frequency, there's a reason for everything, so um, I am gonna be teaching. My formula at the cell centers, once those get built up and going, I will be having my teachings at the centers there to teach people how to do this work because. This is not over, the attack is on, war is on and if you don't know how to protect yourself and defend yourself, it's gonna be really frustrating. Out in the matrix, trying to survive the things that are doing, the poisons that they're injecting all the time. There was recently a law passed that they're taking away a lot of things in the schooling systems. They're taking a lot of things away from the schooling systems because they're, they're, they're creating like these camps. So that you send your children to, to be programmed and it's not fun, it's not, it's what they want it to be because they are grooming more. Soldiers to fight and to do what it is that they want them to do. But there are other spaces, if you're just stuck on Facebook or on social media and on the television, you're not gonna see that. But there are other spaces, spaces and there are other organizations that are working for the benefit of the planet and humanity. And they're creating schools and they're creating healing centers all over the world, not just the cell centers, there's many, many, many of us doing this work. And we are in preparation for all of those people that are gonna be saying no to vaccinations, that are stepping out of the matrix. We are creating a place for you to find your balance and that's what it is, but this is not something that is like, oh, come here and pay this and you could get in. All information is earned, everything that you have is earned, so this is about you learning yourself, unleashing your own power. And going directly to the frequency that you are vibrating, so it all goes back to you, it's what you are vibrating, what you are putting out into the world. That's what's coming back. Alice at doctor's office may have to watch later, but feeling the energy, ache, ache, ache. Apparently crystals in my ears have been the cause of my vertigo and dizziness, ooh, that's very interesting. So you know Smokey could do your um, the tuning forks and get you all tuned up when you get that taken care of, so yes, take care of that, sending you ache. And love, um, exercise helps too. Um, solution, about to tell you a little bit of something about exercise if he can hear me. Exercise for your sexual energy is absolutely essential, have you ever, I've been, I've worked out when I, look, I was an aerobic instructor professionally when I was sixteen years old. I've worked out, I think, since I came out of the womb, I have suffered certain things in my body because of thyroidism and different things like that, different challenges that I've had. But moving around and exercise is essential to your vital energy and to your sexual energy. Because when you're dancing is a good one, for example, because a lot of people think exercise just means weightlifting and stuff, but I, I practice pugilism, which is boxing. And I also practice yoga and I practice just body movements, what makes me feel good, I do it and dance is definitely something that I practice a lot too. And so when I'm dancing, when I'm moving around that energy, I'm feeling that sexual energy, so I'm moving that energy around and I'm raising it up and I'm feeling happy. And I'm feeling good, so you take an action of that physical feeling that's making your phallus hard or making your yoni wet. You wanna be able to take a hold of that energy and do something with it, just because it's now showing outside of your body and you're feeling the effects. Of that erection or of that wetness, whatever, it doesn't mean that you can't stop it, it doesn't mean like, oh dang, it's wet now, we gotta do it now, like we just gotta do it. You know what I mean, it's, it doesn't mean, oh, my penis is hard, that means that I gotta put it inside something. No, you have, and it's a practice, it is a practice that just doing it once or twice is not gonna work. It takes first the knowing, the knowledge, right, and then it takes the study and the practice and you have to know your body. So that you would know what to do next, so that you don't have to rely on, oh, well, I don't have the information, I don't have the money to pay for this course, so I don't have, no. Everything that you need comes to you all the time, when the student is ready, the master will come, when the student is ready, the master will come, just say that all the time. Victoria says, when you exercise and work a sweat is so much better than sex. Look, I would work out and I saw, I would use my, my wand to work out and I would just do things like. You know, gyrations and flows and Kundalini, you know, jerks and stuff like that and it's like, my, my nipples would start getting hard. I would feel the sexual energy from the work that I was doing and that's what caused me to go deeper, you know what I mean? And, and really search this energy out and see what I could do with it and what I created were these pieces, what I've created. Oh, this is a piece that I'm working on. I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna show you something, one of my, my creations that I was putting my sexual energy in. This has a. This actually has three wombs, wait, one, two, three, four, four circles and you can prob- you probably see the, the thing of it cuz I work with them, you can take them out of the painting. Use them for energy work and put it back in the painting, so these are one of the things that we're gonna have available at the. At the healing centers for therapy in our therapy rooms. There's gonna be art therapy healing for people to, you know, discover their, their sexual energy through art. And sexual energy is gonna be a huge thing within the center, you know, that's why, they, they used to call Wilhelm Reich, his creations, his. Um, organ accumulators were called sex boxes and they thought, they called him the sex craze doctor and they thought that he was crazy. Because he talks so much about this powerful orgasmic energy and of course they're gonna make it seem like he's crazy so that people don't pay attention. But he is an ancestor and you know, we just keep coming back, so the truth is always going to be available for those who are seeking it. And those who wanna know it, thank you very much, Mobina, this is another one that I did and I didn't finish it. There's the moon, there's the sun and did y'all know that they're saying that the moon is a satellite? That the moon ain't really a real planet, that it's a satellite that was put there um, from other um, planetary systems to watch us? I'm like, you know what, if that's what that is, then that shit is working, I guess my ancestors from other planets is watching me from the moon because as soon as that moon comes out. I'm stuck, I'm like. Moon, the moon has a huge, huge effect on me and this is another one that I did when I was um. You know, this is part of my journey, this was part of my healing, so. These are the things that I did during my process, everybody has a different process, but it looks like you guys don't have any more questions. So going once, going twice, me boy, if you guys wanna know about my hair, what I did was I braided it up. And then I braided it like braid, one, two, three, four, five, and then I combed it out, sprayed some water on it, put some blue magic. Cuz you know, I've been using all these naturals and shade butters and all of these different things and don't do this and don't do that. And then my husband went and got some shade, some, some blue magic, I was like, let me, let me try that blue magic. And it got my hair looking all nice and shiny, I didn't read, read the ingredients cuz I don't even wanna know, I'm just keeping it real with y'all, I don't even wanna know. Um, but, so then I twisted at the ends and that's how um, somebody said old school. And that's how I got my hair to look the way that it does and so it's really low maintenance, except for you do have to take the time to plait and braid your hair. If I were to just do nothing to my hair, it would be like this, but just more super duper Afro-y, like super duper curly, 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 curly. But um, and then I got on some lip gloss today courtesy of my cousin, Bialma. So um, I wanted to exude that sexual energy and get you guys to pay attention to this topic. Cuz you know, sex energy goddess thirteen, they be thinking I'm a porn star, so I gotta at least give y'all a little something, truth about this sexual energy, so. I'm outta here, thank you all so much for tuning in, on Friday I will be live on my private call, it is a private call. So if you would like to attend, you have to write to Infineonair thirteen dot com, I'm gonna leave that in the, in the, in the description. Infineonair thirteen dot com and say that you wanna come to the study sessions that happen live every Friday night at seven PM Pacific Standard Time. Adi said, my lips is popping. Oh, hold on a second y'all cuz um, I think, I'm, I'm pretty sure he want me to tell y'all something. Hola. See, see Michael. Tell them don't be calling you and telling them that they want a phone? Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes. I'mma tell, I'mma tell them they gotta be ready, y'all gotta be, okay, ache, ache, ache. People been hitting up Michael Melchizedek more for the Mel T four, four, four. Michael is not like, this is not a thing that's about money, this is his work, this is his passion, this is um, something that he does from his heart. For people who need the healing and for people who he feel um, are ready, quite frankly. Um, so just, just have that in mind because Michael is, Michael is Michael, so that's who he is, I said to him. Um, LeVar says, blue magic also has the coconut-based hair products, queen, I'mma have to check it out, LeVar, I'mma check it out, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Adi says, I talk with him and love him, oh, when you know, uh, Melchizedek is. He was actually my husband from another lifetime. And I won't say any more than that, but a lot of people think that sexual energy connections have to do with people. Being in a sexual relationship and it is truly about love and it is about a connection of inner standing and. And it is truly about love and it is about a connection of inner standing and comprehension of what is exists. What is existing in our power as women and our power as male. And there is um a practice that's gonna be available too at the healing centers. Where we're teaching our men and our women to be able to heal each other without having that. You know, without having disruption, I have, I give, I give out a lot of sexual energy. To my male clients without any disrespect to my husband, without doing anything that I couldn't do in front of my husband. I do not participate in anything that's gonna go beyond my comfort or beyond my um awareness of who I am. You know what I mean, that um I recognize the sacredness of this energy and it's not something where I'm, I'm flirting with somebody or I would fondle, so nothing like that. You know, we have to really get out of these perceptions of what sexual energy exchange is. Because we think that it's something that it is absolutely not, you have a sexual exchange, sexual energy exchanges happen between women. Between um children, between all people, you know, it is an energy of love and creation is when we're sharing. And it's important to know those things because that's why you don't feel comfortable with a person that you just met, sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. But um Ken Davis says, big ups to Mike, ache, ache to Mike the solution, um. So it is, it, it, your, your energy picks up on another person's energy and then you start to know what things are okay. Like when we look at the animals, you see them, when, when a male animal wants to get, wants to mate. There's a process that he has to do, there's things, there's energy exchanges that happen in every species before, you know, you get to that point. And it happens, if we look at these relationships in all aspects of our lives, it's not just your relationship with your significant other. When I have a relationship with a woman, you know, there's certain energy that, and certain bonding that takes place. Between that other and woman and I, and I'm not talking about a sexual relationship, I'm talking about a friendship and exchange, a sisterhood. You know, and it, motherhood and like this mother energy, sister energy, all of these things happen all the time, this is not just your. You know, your mother that, that had you or your sister, that's your blood sister, but that's a whole nother situation. And y'all know that I get to talking and I be talking and I be saying, I'ma do a Q and A so that y'all could ask, have questions. But a- apparently nobody has any questions about sex or organ energy. Solution always tells me that that's just because I'm clear in my delivery, but there it is. I'm not gonna be able to answer your questions in my inbox and if you get this and then you go in my inbox. Y'all already know I'm fading out this piece anyway, so it is what it is, y'all have a great one, adios.